Okay. My dad is here. I think my dad is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. Okay. He is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. He is here to change the relationship between the government and the judiciary. My dad is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. The judiciary is the government's judiciary. It is a member of the judiciary. He is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. Here we have the former president KJH Noth, Japath. Former president David Kabua, Chen Watto. And Senator Wallace Peter, Megi Liguip. And Minister Kalani, who is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. Solomon Island. His excuse. I teach Mr. Roche, Mr. Wisely, Chen Namruk. Minister David Paul, Chen Kwajalin. Senator Puruit Pilieman, Maloyalat. I teach Senator Yuroji, Megi Amamro, Chen Wudur. My dad is here to teach us. He 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 is here to teach us. Chairman Yuroy Lani Kabua. He is here to teach us. 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 First gentleman Tommy Kitchen. Speaker, Vice Speaker, Chen Raya. Roka, Chen Rayer. All members of the cabinet are here. Roka, Chen Rayer. Senator Ro. Matta, Chen Roka, Chen Rayer. He is here to teach us. 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 He is here to teach us.
Good morning, Chairman. We have heard about the bill that will change the national building code in 2025. The bill is here. And it has added the national building code, the real long human title, to the Martin Island revised code.
Good morning, Chairman. He is here to teach us. 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 He is here to teach us.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Yes, I am here. Madam Chair, I would like to read the Attorney General's bill number 39. It says that we are going to declare cosmetic and administrative laws. And it says that legal objection. And we are going to vote for it. The LCO will vote for it. And we will vote for the view. Good morning, Dad.
Good morning, Councilor Kwajin. He is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. He is here to teach us.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I would like to hear your opinion on this. I am here to talk. My dad is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. He is here to teach us. Madam Chair. I would like to read the committee on the judiciary. I would like to hear your opinion on this. I would like to hear your opinion on this. I would like to hear your opinion on this. I would like to hear your opinion on this. I would like to hear your opinion. I would like to hear your opinion. And the opportunities and the views of the ministry. This is a committee. I would testify for the national building code of 2025. The bill is here. The ministry is here. The division is here. The building code is here. I would like to hear your opinion. I would like to hear your opinion. I would like to hear your opinion. I would like to implement the building code. I would like to hear your opinion. I would like to hear your opinion. The building code, the safety code. Construction is here. The building is here. Many people are here. Safecard is here. I would like to hear your opinion. 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 Many people are here. Many people are here. Many people are here. I would like to hear your opinion. I would like to hear your opinion. I would like to hear your opinion. Even if we are here by self-explanatory, we are here by the ministry. I would like to hear your opinion. 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 We don't know what they are. I would like to hear your opinion. I would like to hear your opinion. Madam Chair. I would like to hear the self-explanatory. I would like to hear the self-explanatory. I would like to hear the self-explanatory. Em, ah, degaworain matalo merar, lukun, ah, edro gidrabi piilin, arijinem, rebajanganainech, ah, clarify chabrot miralala, kuwaga chabrot kachidaku, ah, kamidiin ewdijama, chairman. Yawenech, ah, chair, mubilainech, pjarajinem, ah, bakralo chon komol.
Komol minister rainin, kan miralaygo, yidog, naanidiyaga ichabrujalak. Em man, ok. Tok. Yiduwalak kay. Komol. Cholopar ngai, arichabrujalak, miralaygo ye man. Ayegicen niddijalay piil chilunguradum yon, building kogudio. Em, jiri ekarchino, kanonono ga'gai, em, yidog, aru tok nanchen obijana eji gaitchalak lukun, menenek irapi dagloch, mena yewar. Yogu war chichu, men ranek kagamanamalapilin. Em, etich kamololi, miralaygojane, kuba, miralaygojane, minister, ah, Thomasaini. Em, kienek, one malakotan, leto ngan, degawarin chaptan wuyu, parrenpar, pokotokal malagujano wayerem, chuhujim kalokadaman. Ah, cherbaliw, kipperi ilo wuyu, komol kogudij koman.
Komol chair, kap yawin chupungu nganolup. Wada da klim, komolalanis, kinchon chupung, yay wuyu yimaman, glorin. Ah, etain, jamada kabewa junior, ngai, assistant secretary, ngan. Division, eh, gal human wuyu, naetan, building safety, impregulation. Malipun lapapa, ilotarinwey, em, jangan gar, minister, kaligaren nanu, tengan pokotokal, tengan gar, perkualuk cirikagli em kogudij. Chair, kap memberin, lubanali, man. Kilioli, brorien gelir, em kogudij komus kajuju. Em, plen, malangi, perkualuk cirik, chichu miralaygo, merarjepa, walugilwey, ejetodo, ngan, perkualuk jet miralaygo ngan, public, laptata, public. Em, chupungunin rain. Tengan kualuk ilo ejetodo wey, akpa ilo ejetodo wey, kie war chuan division gal, human wuyu, em, no tada pa, ejetan, building safety, impregulation. Ejagobor, cluri, rezervali, kopon, divisionin, em, gar chino air ilo, kotojin, rojilu. Em, bilengkai cherbaliw, jiskajing komoni. Parap cherbaliw, lapta dahin, pujin implementing, building codeo, ah, majalin, jaga. Agar moga ten anet, cherbalkin lukun pugchigin, chich, lowe. Lu cherbaliw, mantak, jet chalowe, chijayeguti, chun piilio. Ah, ingin majik kajing, lemantak rainin, eh, piilin, inech chibangkech, ah, kamarongkech, pujin lore, ah, building code, kinar, ah, nae wawinarakal. Em, kabirulak, pugten cherbalkin. Em. Imech, chitugin gar, chichu akchirik, miralay, charkanan, limantak, yu chupungunin rain. Ah, chair, komol, kenablik chirgin.
Komol. Jamada kabewa chueni, ergan miralaygo, jet, miralaygor, aleberaman, ilo amkualukwe war chuan, division gal lo, ministerin an work, em, benedet, eh, dalii. Em, nej, ah, katari, ab building code, kageyinin, ngayenajalay ilo niddijalay, em, chij mononono, gan miralaygin. Inajilia wajbar ngan degawaraneru, ngaybar war miralayjeni, komol.
Man, komol, madam chair, perodalo, aon, klim kogudij, ah, kluk, chair, senator momotaro, kap, ah, penoroni, iman, lo, ah, kamidiin an, JNGR. Ah, kile, minister, aini, kap, ah, rezervarain, minan kobalo, nanuan, yuma, lak, air, nanin, klim kogudengan olap. Ruudijero lo, lammanet, lo kargaran, kogudij, kaviyaguan ngan olap, rainrar, kobadok, paranworo, right, chuin, ah, online. Etain, James Miyazoi, ngat, menijaan, PMU, ah, project management unit, eh, chunian, divisiono, human, ah, ministry of public works, infrastructure, and utilitiesum. Cherbaloan, OBG, no, eh, pujin, ah, manage olapen, ah, infrastructure projectkoan, kien. Yum, yar, kananodum, pokonolo, ah, koylagin, eno dagai, ah, building codein, inech, eh, then, cheladai, projectkameang, ah, oleben, infrastructures projectko. Karmoda gai, ilo ar, implemente projectin, ngaytok chuan designer, ten iligun maylo, rikijong, lore, kodogair, ilo, ailonggair. Kyotj mononobe, ah, kyagaymanan judok, kodingan, model, ah, jinjinsurgo, oleben, ah, projectin an, kien, rezulore, building codein an model. Yum, albar mononobe, timarongin, ah, enforce a codingme, oleben provisiongo, me rekaranan, ah, situationgay narilo, mayalom chichup, lore, specification, waan, ailongkuchet. Yum, inan kaligarotagai, ah, OBG, otivision galin, and assistant secretary, jamada, ah, building safety regulation, inech, general agen, ah, OBG, no, PMU, eno dagai, ererijabar, enforce a projectin an, PMU. So, ah, albanaman, wawinin, wey, ah, ilo arpar, enforce a projectan PMU, chich, insurgo, oleben, projectan, kien, rezulore, inech, ah, building codein an model. Mujerin gar, chichu miralayin an, pug, ah, pokotokal, ini, ini not komol.
Komol, menijaan, infrastructure, buildingkuan, kien, la ilunkien, James Miyazoi Junior, komolulim koding, miralaygo aleberaman, chij mononobe. Enajupar ariyang building code, em, chenek, ana gay, inajibale dogan, degawin, njeriyang elikatai jo.
Wada da chair, nan bar kobalo, tilo olap, nanin kilego, wada da kile, anichemerujilang. Em, kile, manedayo, rugagiro chemerem, kienew, oleben, ruderrein, kileyo, chairman, chairperson, ah, em, oleben rain, huan kamidiin. Nan praynot kile, minister Thomasum, oleben rain, motaisin, kap kijujolap, lo, chupungunen rainin. Ogetain, lo batch, kamina ga, ngai chuan, building code officer, cherbali pen assistant secretary, jamada, lo divisionin gal. Em, nan bar kobalo, pinoleben, miralaygin, rar kaligari, chen, building coding. Building coding, eh, gal, an ailunkien, inech chibangkejujilo, kagamanamalak, wawinarakal, kap, alaptata, gichen, ah, safety, ilo, wawinar, kagamanamalak, eh, then. Fire, gichen, fire electricity, em, oleben menegin, ruchibangkejujangan. Pwen, rigalak, ariyon, kain, menegin, situationgay me, ragowata, kap, rachpoto, chorret, eno daru, miralaygan, ileng menogor, karwalagimane. Me, ileng, meurgoan, arumijina ilunkien, medayertjago, ten chorrenkienem, most recently, eno daru, miralay, em, ilo, miralaygoan, minister Thomasaini, ken, chikinkuila guaru. Building coding, eh, chibangkejwey, merongin, ilo building coding, eh, ikichen, fire, elangkain, materials gorich, specify, wey, merongin, control fire, control smoke. Kap, standardgay, ilo building coding, gorich, based on international standard, international building codeo. Em, meni inegem, man, ngan, ailunkien arwey, eh, chuan standard, me, internationally accepted. Em, ikamolalanib, chamarongin, emarongin, war chuan building codeo, me, inech chibangkejuj, ilo, ileng wawinko. Em, etchup, ilo firewall, the electrical provisions, some kain, inak, praynot, ilo accessibility, em, disability provisiongo, jet, menogomirulgun aur. Pwich, include, kijujolap, kargartchoron, kargarutilo, meurin, building code, chlamnakan, oleben, menegin. Em, menewin, garkanan, garkanan, pain, em, kamolulim, parchunalan, kile, klukum, ilo, kamidiinam, kijujolap, komol.
Komol, kamina ngagan, miralaygo, chij mononogan, ah, tip, ah, division kian, na ilo, wudin, wuyun, komroj, ah, jamada junior, pagarun. Yegu kien inijel dogan, secretary, wan, em, musiya, ngayawar chabriu dijan, ganan, pa, komol. Ngunin, ah, komol chair, em kogudijuan kamidiinam. Ngayidog, anutchuan, ah, secretary, yapamusiaya, yo me, lulurjaga cherbalkuan, kagamanamalak, wawin, disability program, um, senior citizens. Anu gan minister, ah, etchap, merongar kobado, lo, chupungunin rainin, yar dogut, in. Kanenglok, building coding, em, jan derilak, kakoba bago, an, accessibledi, ngan senior, im, retoro ar, eno dar, miralay, ilo, rainin. Enang nichalagujane, access, ngan retoro, agar, romeleng, mayanolo, enkunier. Em, chunin piil, ngan kagamanamalak, em, ministeri, ar, laban cherbali, ipen kamidiyo, ngan lulurjaga, wey, kakoba bago, oleben, wawingo, ngan kagamanamalak, servicesgo. Iman, ngan anarminarin, special kurubin, em, magdut, ilo. Ilo airidutak, ngan oleben, buildingkuan, kien, im, eno dahol, per private sectoro. Ah, em, yar dogut, eno chuan, chuanio, judogan, kobalo, ilo, yidijantisibility, kurup, em, senior citizens, komol. Komol, secretary, prentagan, miralaygo, ay, telugun egutbar, kilewey, eschasbalay, merong, em, magdut, retoro ar, tijebar, aru, building kienme, an, aru, chumar, an, kieninar. Moga ten aile dogan, memberen kamidiin, eganan, ot, poduchet, miralay, karwey, nijigogum, kamolole, minister, ah, Yamamura, ten wudur, em, jan kobadogiperejeng. Em, ledog, churgen, nanagay, sanatar piliman, chanmaloyalap, ewaran, wudamig, chupungunin, aipaga, inech, pello, yirinkuwara ariyang iliju. Yegu kie ngayenek, ledogan, am, memberen kamidiin, arganan, ewar chabriu dayarayang kachidak, akiju, yiriyang kanan, pain, benedet, chinojantuwian, pen, former president, David Kabewa, amyainin, kogudij.
Komol chair. Wada ten awan malak, na war kobalo, nanin, kile, kogudijeguan, komojawalap. Ministerin, em, rainrar, kobadogpen, ten ministryan, work, infrastructure, milidildi. Kile speakerro, ar, degawinardojen, obijan, attorney general, em, chabarainan, niddijalay, tlugem, awalapru. Em, ranem, er, karwijalak, kopon, yirinking, lewajyaguan ngan awalapru, reyrunjaga. Ah, chair, eh, chunin, na, piil, ban, emman. Eno dujilogu, eh, nijet, tlaban, chibang, kijibarok, meuruan anarumij. Eno dar, chalaga, meyeruin, em, plen war, iba, em, jokuchet, ileng chorren, rarwalagujan, kijek, em, jenan war, chorrenim. Em, ilugunammanem, awargwey, norjun, kageyinich, kaloki, norjun, ar, National Building Code, em, kamolol, no logjenin, ah, ministerin, ar, lemantak. Ah, piilin. Em, etchalolukun, kachidakalabipak, wej, ilo jun, piil, ilugunammanem, awargwey, nun. Taboragam, cherbali, ano, magat. Meneweray, chichu, menikitpachi, gapten lukun, ruidim, ilo, chunin, menikitchen. Chunian, ah, nampaga, nampachi, duilo, pagechidim, chuan. Chuan, menikitchen, application ngan, permit, feeset, kalokey, inay war, plen, permit fees. Ah, etchap lukun, alikar, chidengi. What's the cost of that permit? Em. Ibarlo, ikitchen, menaganewijame, ar kalokan, awargu, nakal, chuanibwey, war, tolel. Chikin, anarumij, na, em, magdug, ngayawar, chorren, ngan, me, enwar, yalanan, anarumij, magajin, truwetjeni. Em, meneginim, irielong, war, ah, armira, em, chijibat, tijebul, ranay, kamolol, ganean, on, kanarar, walingatak. Karangan, maganem, er, lap, angayidogan. Awzulga, anarumij, em, gaimer, relochirik. Ngaypaj, me, newar, chuan, plen, ah, armijen, kananakal, etchap, ground floor, da, parileng, floor, logileng. Em, man, gue, barwar, specification, ikitchen, weight. Ngaypaj, chongan, eriroon, em, kajurun, iziwey, ngelwan, erwey, merong, udilak, ngaypaj, morolak, em, kienin. Anijibalowwey, em, jan war, piilin, kalokan, kain, kain, ah, material, gane, merayujin. Cherbali, mer, ah, etchap, magajayer, chorren, luk, kijek, no, is lawyer, plim, kain, em, meurin, ar, kuny. Em, kumarbar, ekwarwalo, piilin, chongan, an, peolela, miangkar, komoni. Ah, kichabalo, eh, egutplim, barre, edop, edon, ngayaj, require. Ah, menagay, ah, nairba, smoke alarm, ngaypaj, war, kijegam, kienin, ejagir, require. Ngayin, ngan, already, ar, amyro, ah, ten, yangru, warren, magajin truwet. Em, chalogu, ileng chorren, rarwalakilo, meyeruin, yonatwa, iba. Ila, ngay, enajipan, malam, mit, taborak, menin. Entchapjen, meyeruin, cherbaliw, meyeruin, cherbaliwar, lo, iba, em, par, awudaralan, go, kan kijibarok, meuruan anarumij. Em, konajitangan, iba, rainin, iribio, yonim, chongan, er, ebaga, run, em, ngaywar, kijek, chun, etchorren, war, kilibulip. Yegu inay, pujragin, ah, keno tava, inay, kobawaj, ilo, agarri, kataparinan, piilin, minister, komol.
Komol. Senator, president, David Kabewa, gan, miralaygo, amelbeir, emman, em, ilo, hamne, kalokamri, piilin. Kien inijdogo, ngan, ah, senator Yamamura, ngayawar chabriu, ijan, konan kal, kogudijuk, amyaini.
Komol, ah, madam chairperson. Kenalaya, nanin, klim kogudikwe. Chairperson, desi momotaro, member rain matam. Rain, rajarido. Yen hearingin, kap, rome, reten, merongin, karkobado, ilo, yenin, chikkomane, hearingin, arigichen, bill, number chilunguradum chon. Kogudij, ah, ministeran, public works, secretaryan. Internal affairs, em, menijaan, PMU. Mualaburin, rezervarain, re, periyoman, ambrelan, minister.
I'm private and I plan to borrow 2 million, over 200 million in chain construction. So again, there were a lot of, I was chain inspector, inspector, engineer, inspector, and all of that. And then, I was civil engineer, structural engineer, electrical, plumbing, mason, all of them were working.
Konsul amendments regarding the current planning and zoning act. The chairman of the committee on urban development and planning said that he would repeal the repeal in the kitchen building code, human planning and zoning act. We have already cleared the bill in which we discussed that this is not the actual building code.
Okay, the bill in which the committee on urban development and planning said this is not the actual building code. However, in the document, the framework where we are meeting the government's building code regulations. We have already discussed that where we are repaying the cabinet when prescribing regulation or building code regulation. There is flexibility in the cabinet that we can use standard code for residential, standard code for requiring a camera building, a church. And I think so. I think the former president and senator Kesa said that building committee is a local planning committee. We have already discussed that the majority of the area is major, and it is the best document on planning and zoning act. And we are working on commission on local government. And we are planning on the land owner's role, the chief land owner's role. The community consultation is presenting planning and zoning proposal or rejected by major landowners. It is a human project that you are planning on following the planning and zoning act. And we are also restructuring local planning commission. We are also representing customary land title holders. And we are integrating traditional leadership in government process. And it is the minimum requirement. And the planning and zoning is involved in air quality, air quality. And building code focuses on kitchen construction, air quality and building. And then safety requirements, minimum requirements, standard. And I think it is appropriate to run a railway and a car, human planning and zoning. And we are working on building, construction and engineering. However, we are working on air quality, and we are talking about the planning and zoning act. And we are working on representing the representative landowner, decision during the planning and zoning process. We are working on that. Mr. Chairman.
I think the chairman of the committee on urban development and planning has already discussed that we are working on the current document, the planning and zoning act. We are trying to transfer that over to the Gray Dipend, then building code to the Ministry of Public Works. That is what I was told, so we are going to update that, but then we will go to the committee. And we have already discussed that all of the way we are then it is new. And we are working on the government, and then we are working on the way we are planning on zoning. And we are working on the committee, and we are working on that. So, Madam Chair, I have discussed that. And we are working on that. And I think the chairman of the committee, the panel members, members of the government, the committee has chosen. And we are working on that. I think the chairman, Madam Chair.
I think the minister of the committee, the chairman of the committee, I think the councillor Philip. He has already discussed that, the members committee. And we are working on that. The members are working on that. The chairman of the committee.
I think the chairman of the committee. The chairman of the committee, Thomas Haini, and the chairman of the committee has already discussed that. And I think so. And the chairman of the committee has already discussed that. And he has already discussed that. And we are working on that. And we are working on that. The bill has discussed that. We are working on the construction company, building code. And we have already discussed that. And we are working on that. And we are working on the bill, apply the law requirement on building code. And I think that. I think that. And we are working on that. And we are working on that. And I think that. And I think that. And we are working on that. And we are working on that. And we are working on that. I think the chairman.
I think the chairman.
I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. Kitchen building project, and it is required. And it is. General Samurri, the chairman of the committee, project. We are working on that. We are working on that. And we are working on that. And we are working on that. EPA, the government, and the air quality. The excavation, the excavation. And we are working on that. We are working on that. And we are working on that. And we are working on that.
I think the chairman. I think the chairman.
I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. It is required all of the signature on landowner's. And we are working on EPA. And we are working on that. The bill, and the committee, and we are working on that. And we are working on that. And we are working on that. Building code. I think the chairman.
I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. Building code. I think the chairman.
I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. And we are working on that. 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 And we are working on that.
I think the chairman.
I think the chairman. I think the chairman. This is the bill, it is in its infancy stage. And we have discussed that. And we are working on 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 that. I think the chairman.
I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman.
I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman.
Minister Paul.
I think the chairman. 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 I follow up the discussion of the chairman, I think. 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 I think.
I think the chairman. 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 The timing is right, I think. 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 I think.
I think the chairman. 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 I think the chairman.
I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman.
I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman. I think the chairman.
Por chuhan alan yogoyengan ola baramijin ailenkayin. Emiloan kamidiyan changiara kamidiyuan kiendan. On maalakodulim pabuli gerinkayin anar chino kiichupun. Chognan mohtapujiragam lealak oleb nabar mudiyijalab tada kamolol chamerilang. Kunchokane em ezmiooruan armijin ailenkayin. Ar, emilo kilan manitgayin ar, lechalana heroonam kau dhiherooniganan var. Lealak ar kau dhioli burgagim igaliidjagoche mermchiner ilo ailenkayin. Praynwat kau dhiherojalabalabarwar. Chiermin herojalanik abuakuba herojero, em lerojero glo muiuman heroj. Ema gap uunar yo. Ema oleb herojerochet balagan ailenkayin. Chuinchibijilkilem kamolol jalaptadaangan. Leerojestem, ema oleb herojem, leerojero air ailenginmejero. Em elungudiar ruamejut chichukujugimananak ana moht ilo ailenginair. Praynwat kuva armijinmejero, alabim armijinmejero. Praynwat ilodan kamidiyinali, lealak kau dhiinganmedem president hildas yaini kuva. First gentleman, tamik chino junior, speaker wadi, vice speaker chagrayajem, rokarajarair. Oleb memburun cabinet yo, rokarajarair. Praynwatkanain klait senator ro, dem rokarajarair, praynwat klait oleb local government go. Rongolemen ilo majelidim, oleb memburun local government go, mayor, oleb klai kumutkachuju. Dem chuinchibijilkiliiganan lealangan. Mojaden goemen herojem, leerojero air, ailengunchaluj. Em armijirujuir, olebararmijinchaluj. Uimergun kenunno, ken klaiyo air buin, na inilunudijalain. Ilochupun arrelabanraynin kamidiyinaankiend. Eba kitokodrochet, har kachitakair rumutok. Agan motogi, negorchuhan arrueberijin chijuman maalakodakaranan. Kaguyan go. Dora lebanraynin chijitukunlale pabuli iringenudijalapiilnem payungulchilu. Yo emi labor nan president workers amendment, kaguyan. Emi naikpieragijenim, etonganainrigaiganan klai olebanreyin berijin. Minister Paul, praynjenah immigration and labor. Praynwat AG Adenwen, oleb instebenandijalamekapijepenevi. Chuniyan Stephen ran nitiyala in chujum. Ri didok pilin, em prayanwot kuwa idok, chibarbaram katabaruan pilin. Kowdi, Ain Rick George, chujum on maalak.
Komol, Chairman. Biin nam payonguchilu, Labor, Resident, Non-Resident Workers Amendment 2025. Chon bill ngan chon kiend, ngan ugotolak kagayanewan labor, riligunrore chogayim charabal ilo ailinkayin. Chen ru yeye, kalabalang ngan chiluyeye ngan air kamanin. Kamanairadan renuiwi, kagael pebain charbalak air. Im ngan ungo ayin lagot.
Komol, Ain Rick. Kyen ipijeragam leto motangan Inji. Payan leto kalmalakoyanoani kichien. Alang negor girapetakak chaperewot. Kowdi yuk Inji Adenwen.
Komol Chair, mohtata kile yuk imuwana kamidiyina. Euor, euor chichu issu ngan kainangan, pogelengatagi chen pial enguchilu. Imaitama ka chine charbalipen the Business Forum Tanak Kamidi, kuwa alapi pen Minister Tebedangan Kamane. Kar objective yogan kar kalabalok year, the validity in chon work permitak, kuwa alapi pen chon work visa, payan kalabalok chen ekaran ngan pile ngan chiluyeye. Menyo chegwin nej togonnam charbalipoy, pili nej barkonono gan annual review issuance. So, etcharin tanak contradictoryge. Ageni, emyara kar togonnam kar kaman, kar togonnam kononipen kar Minister Tebed, im chine togonnam barkaman barkatchimay ngane. Tengkomol tana.
Komol, Inji gen melalego. Kyen ngaynajileto ngan, inar gen surduji pilinim. Prayanwot kalikarangan kijeteki pilinar. Wallegotak, chibarbaram katabarginar. Komol, kowdi yu Minister Paul.
Komol Chair, lochuwan yowe ngan yu kap rinuan kamidiyina. Em, mohtajanani on maalakon, jetok chichuchoaro kalmalakoyen gini kichien. Chibarbaran katabarin an pile ni ganaan pajeragam kamo luel anit chamerilang. Im kile oleb rojien kilerem kowdi yir. Chair ilo, elingrelepan rayin yebar kuwalak, rain merit, lolojaki charbalgin rauro gini kichien. Labor kap immigration me kagienin abeyan chelat charbalgin air. Eber chibu ruar. Travis yomeyilale labor mlamu mercywa yomeyilale immigration. Ilo, me ronej bulin leto, cholopuri ronej bulin leto ayro kalmalakoyen. Igijen chibarum katabarinan kagienin, agan amendmentin, ailemakudin. Ay ganaan leto chirik background, melal information gini kichien. Lukun ta wuninar, kalelenotak kagienin. Nganar kaman ugotangan Labor Non-Resident Workers Act. Im prayanwot consequential amendment go merade chelat immigration, kagienuan immigration. Ilo yeye olak, matanar katabaruan kiennin ilo Human Agenda 2030, engage pen private sectoroy. Ngan laale tago kiennin emaram charvali payir ngan, yun maalak charbalak omir rechelat ekaniminar. Em, ilo em magidin kienninar kamanin ru business forumgo. Chon iloga November pain yeye ochamlak. Em, yokeen gar ru iloga July in yigin. Im olep in forumgayin agar gorchuwan agar iba, ru outcome documents. Im it, it kudubujy olep in ta issue omi jar kononogabi. Im it, ngayem manipam chair chine kuwa iki didok ilo, it charbalgin oda arep en ngan rekodan kamidiin, kabin outcome documents kiend. Me char chenjen both adan rojen representative ran private sectoram, representative ran kiend. Payan lukun, me im lolo ta lukun, chibarbaran katabaran kar forumin im tago merar walak. Im tagorar char kononogabi ilo forum. Forumin, an business forumin. Nganwot leto chuan lutu karun kamelelegi. Lukun kar resultku idelakun kononogojad merar barbukchigir. It igijen wewenan, ruwajim relang, rajarbarromir chichbuketokajalidigin. Mu imatan menuguin me apayan lukun aurk, ilo, an ringitom charbalipidijin yuwan remajal. Im chijalaki ilo rayin nelang chut kagien komijijeluri. Im kagienin me edwalakiloyan puding pili, medjetan kaman ugotajani. Kanchongan nampain yoke omi har mirin reberonutokom charbal. Em, lakmat eligin, em maget. Ngayem maget ak ekstan, ngexan. Em, perpiriyonar kar kononoguipen private sectoroy. Raarkualon ngan kajiang ke, matan menugume apayan lukun apangwe ibukian. Ed, gregay iten olebi yote imchit, reyagujin kaman renuiwi permitak air aga work visaak air. Im reyagujin go through the same process olebi. Im it, ibukian nganir air kamanem is time consuming nganir. Redalake, redyabat continue ngan ainich lomajilin ngan air. Pelujigin charbalgin mercarpugetogir perang kamani. Ilo pijinijigin kachuju. Im ajelgin aragar charbalipen ronum kuwa back and forth ilo gijen tolo President Ginalo business forumgin ro. Chujarareake, penej mantalang ngerjri kaman chudukutakongan, kagienin merit perilun ilo kagieninar. Pajen kaidokojan ru yeye ngalalimiyeye. Chab ngan laborota nganabar immigration. Im it, ijo wotake. Kagieni me draft imi perma amijenang eba chiduyeye. Aga eligin, anriro formogin korrelektada. Im yaroit kabini ipen ronegati lealak kamanepen lalimiyeye. Im it, yor chon working draft it charbalayotam, it idokotam itonganipen kamidiin nganarengani koku inko pridilo languagege. Aga, aurupajen idoki manam kamelelegi, publikran melalum kamidiin en melalege. Intentionalini be chab ngan chiduyeye, aga nyangalalimiyeye. Ijo wotake, maximum lalimiyeye. Aga, any perpiriyodion kontra reken me it kadaan rajarbalenam employerenan. Im ajingane, wangchongane kagienme iba up to five years. Aga, employment counter rekaname iba chiduyeye. Yowe, labor immigration reniji shui chiduyeye. Innam, anabar adan employeren bebé, parkagaeli, ngakagaeli, aga terminidi. Im chab kagaeli em gamaikaroliro. Et chalogoda. Iju yojon meyrun aurupajen melalaga gijen residency requirement ngan citizenship. Payor chuan kagien ilo kagien nganar. Bangno kujidongan majilin ilo kilan charbal, ilo wewenkeen, itchab, itchab penebin, itchab count to 12 or residency requirement okon pupakam sibijin in majal. Menoy auruhin be kijujin melale. Em, Attorney Generalen any aiwijin bar ngelaring kachidak, emaroni bar kamelelegi provision taineme ngai kononogabi ilo kagien nganar. Im it, char lale yayo, edjimui imchichi mamantadaangan kijuju chumar. Im chijaywij bar charbalipen private sectorinar. Im kachidoginke ardogijani payir. Kenkechijalake yuryo, rilyoloriyake, jim kalek ekaniminar i private sectoroy. Em, dukun wulleblep kap chibarum katabaran pili nigiyoba, kajiangan kamanijet elemakotokomi nej gie kamanabeyan kalabalokojen. Ru yeye ngan net lalimiyeye, maximum. Em, ngeko nganayan bar renuiwi yowe yajibar. Absinirejitalanganipen employeroye aga ru mirip buketok rajarbarin. Et chalokajidogare, reyagujin nej kamanir requirementigime, mohtajanairor reyagujin kaman health clearance, police clearance, imolimigine odamis et chalokajidogare. Em, iloan yegen lalimyere per. Perpiriyon katabarin an net elemakotogin nej we, ilo air perijigin, rechabaywijin nej reyaguji bar kaman clearance gin. Tonotair kyen nej perijiginim. Et tur iloan tourationin visa kap work permit kiend air meridilojen chiginro. Yowe, ibot ngi jumui auk kamelelegi oleminigin chair, ilgun, cem nat igijen auk kualak lukuntaio, kagienin ich chibarake. Ngan kaman maalak im kabirurokola kan rajar companygin nan remajal, buketok rajarbarin me raywiji. Ngan air, kaman be serviceigin air ilo business, ilo majilin ren chetokomi renet. Kanperiripen pirurwayar kaman charbaligin rauro. Komol, Chair.
Komol, Minister Paul. Entru dujaran pial, itidyala pili enguchilu yoy imi igijen, flaborak working permitoko. Amendmentak kupapa ko ngalan piliin. Kyen ngaynajileto ngan rajarbaruan immigration kap labor. Chujum kalokachi mirongan rekotakareng. Em, ta eroyowamudo chigincarbalowam. Kowdi, devanjangan komol.
Yawe, Madam Chair. Im memburun kamidiyina, kamidiyina. Kowdi, ministeri obrajarbalin itidyala. Kowdi yu bar kile, lealak kile nganijiwar inebello yenin. Em, kamo luel gan chuan raylinaman kamo luelanijepetaper yeninim. Opportunitan nganan. Am rajarbarin ankien idok maanijan kamidiin. Igijen, elemakotaka amendmentigin ngan kaman maalak. Anot, wewen charbalak ngan addressi. Kanan im kachetokom aywujawan romatalok private sector. En odan Minister Paular kamijayjeki. So, etain mercywa apalat, chon itaraktaruan immigration. Em, ikamo luel nganam merongin bello, erganraynepan rayininduyaringin. Inipokonay yoome elang kachetogigijen, immigration kap gen work visa. En otake, kononohan erganrayganraynin. Ukutakatakain ngan kagienewan Labor Non-Resident Act. Komol, im kowdi yot, Madam Chair.
Komol. Komol chiwakan rayin, kilek Madam Chair. Kile, chenadanaoyojen ligip. Kiliyijinim, ministerinim. Rajarbarin an, insiyagam nitiyala. En odan kar ministeri pogelengat minigin tar. Charjarjen kar pijiniporumguru. Ilo originaladan. Actean labor gay chagartamalelo boromoyoke. Lukun willewellebekeji potokar miray me chalogair. Har kabelakei pier peran trinir majalayam lokolokon suyer barro. Kar inayujen business boromorar. Leto ba idya gair ngan kaman ikoku baba gay. May ipijeragijin, may iliyeway ngan kamidiine, payan lamanakantayo, yakar mamangan remajarinar. Ailenkayinar, komol. Komorchu maromol ilotan memperan CHIR. Mercywa apalat jam Travis Cho. Ru Richard Wallow immigration labor division war ilukienin. Akiyongaynajileto nganipen memburun kamidiye. Ru chetoreyabaya patowat. Ayinayileto nganipen Senator Peter. Chen ligeypoyin chujum on maalak. Paik, kwalokalmalakoyen ngan.
Yap, malalokar mirin. Madam Chair, cholobur komol be kamerong kile yelo yenin. Em, kamo luel we chamarobor rodo galigin karailabe. Kamol elgan maakope, epabala jir. Kile anijman tadam, kile roriyinklear manetheyo. Clear rajarbarin an nitiyala. AG naroy, har prayanwot kuwa tok. Prayanwot kile ministerin ar chuan. Em, rainar char jetok. Uwidnijirin ro. Chen raaguan labor kap immigration. Ed, chetraagomi elabay rauro ngan lalinar kap kienninar. Chonin billalaban kaitutollimo. Ailengchichuju, kachetekoinit limantak. Ak, yawengan ar amijin ailenkayin. Lobotada ar amijiroy chijatolodair. Ar amijin ligeypok ru wuduyair. Em, remajar rujmeret, periduligun majilin chalujyiraringin. Anot, choneme egeba pulin rongochiluliye madalak. Ar anot chon immigration inspector Lotterenay. Em, ruin wewen yijinme piliin it kononogare. Em, an lukun payan konamlep Lottereo. Raynin. Chichkononogan, lenglaw rilgin lo majilin. Ak, patabi rilakalonan wan ministerinke, ebara aurk ngan private sectorair. Anotake, chimalalege elwunechalak. Remajalame, elang air kabeli gijen aywujiginme, ijala raagijen private sector. Ak, imeronek kachidak ipemiro chumar. Ilo chiluyeye modalak. Et changanrelang chainwalindab pialin. Chedanerilgin, charbalipen private sector ilo majilin. Elang ripodokimi melalaga, igijen kiend. It kononudurin rilgin, chiluyeye madalak. Em, anodan ministerenava aurakowin. Anodan kamanilo forumgoro mekachuju, pijinyigolom majilin rapuwa tok kalaaylamanakangwayowin. Im chenala, kechoniyan irabetokoraji yonilo. Air kachewin ogodorilgin, rajarbarjinjen lige. Ed, ubijgana amiroro, ubijigorilgun aurkkanak. Em, kacheteka kaimgarongan ipemiro. Anodan ru meri jipagiruni immigrationin malapar. Chen ipemiro amare. Ta ope nohokotak wewenin anodan merogar practicingman tak. Ak, kyeyechoyan horchun weweneme egan anodan kamelethelo pialin. Inayajaywiji. Chaperot melalajen ipemirope aurk, pe pila aurk. Em, edjimuege iloan rilunrain. Idongan majil itchab chalailotari. Edjimuege mohtajanair relantok, ngaybo rajarbal menyo. Kamaniraya ja playangan work permitair. Mohtaoch, mohtaoch nair chutoliver boden. Paralo chutok rajkualak work permiten. Em, edjimuege rilgin, rilgin rain yalotada, igijen visaaneme, resident visaan. Edjimuege yborwalaw weweninke.
... I get in and bowl army ready to money, you know, pump key I am, stacky shelf, I am. Really long ago the current system, the only reason that I'm probably I get shut down the borders. Him chap car really long ago army majesty, but then you look terrible again, and army really make a day, concern the guy here. And when you can I know, and, 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 and I like car, but can you go sponsor him in here, it's a kind of public, like, the night catch you on there. Then, can you talk about majesty, religion? But I mean, the army run really long ago the current system, I believe, many, you look, I mean, yeah, okay, even when we end, real lock, er, way, and business, I mean, I know, and then, and clearly, you know, and public process, you all even can do, you know, general. Come on.
Come on, come on, Minister, I'm a little, I'm a little, I I get, but you can tell what concern you want. But you like, really long ago, more than really long ago, I, what about, I really long ago, really long ago. It's a lot, rule. So, I, we, we're working for me, they may do, okay? So, I put it on, I would look in, probably, I'm a little, but you got, I believe, outcome target, I mean, I got, me, then, private sector, I would, you know, my then, with you and chair and committee. I come on fair, and you know, I will. Come on. Senator.
You want, my, my, Madam Chair, um, come on, I'm a little, um, could they, catch it, okay, concern, oh, then, um, then, why, Madam Chair, I'm come on, well, Minister, gonna, um, but then, really long ago, I will, uh, well, when, oh, you, uh, well, when, our catching, uh, it through, you know, um, you know, are in, I mean, it's terrible, oh, yeah, because I'm a guy, oh, you know, um, the, the, yeah, I, um, um, and, while, catch it, okay, um, Madam Chair, I think it, even, I'm, 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 Senator, um, Peter, can, they, uh, I'm, 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 I get, I get, I get, I get, I, 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 I'm, I'm, Senator, Peter, I'm, Madam Chair, you look, catch it, I'm, I'm, you, 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 I'm, 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 you look, it's, 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 so, I'm, 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 for example, I'm, Pacific region, in, all even country, well, uh, forum, um, right, visa on arrival. I'm, 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 um, I'm, 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 of course, I'm, 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 grant their entry, and I mean, short term. So, V O A, if you, I, 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 um, um, challenge, okay, I'm, 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 and compliance, I, I, challenge, okay, I know, that, I'm a little, I, 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 I'm, I, you know, are, look, and, can I, I know, but then, but, I'm, 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 I, 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 I'm, security, I, 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 I'm, I, 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 I'm, 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 I, 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 I'm, 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 Senator, no, the, when, I did it, okay, I'm, 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 I'm,
No, uh, I'm, 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 now, panel, I'm, 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 Minister, um, Attorney General, uh, arranged, channel, like, um, I'm, 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 I, 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 I'm, 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 uh, coordinate, I, 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 I'm, 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 uh, immigration, um, I'm, 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 John, uh, shop, I'm, 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 Army, I'm, 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 I, 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 I'm, 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 you know, I'm, yeah, I'm, 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 Construction, I'm, 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 uh, company, construction company, I'm, 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 you know, I'm, yeah, I'm, 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 uh, mid-train, I'm, 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 project, I'm, 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 um, I'm, 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 and forum labor, um, I'm, 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 uh, I'm, 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 capacity building, I'm, 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 subject, I'm, 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 My, I'm, 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 continues under, to an extended period, or renewed, uh, employment contract. Army, I'm, 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 Come on, Chair.
Come on, Senator, no, it can catch it, okay, man, concern. I'm, 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 Senator, David, Kavua, when, come, money, but, I'm a little, I'm, 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 Come on, Come on, Minister Paul, I'm I'm, 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 I'm,
Come on, Chair. I'm, 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 concern, I'm, 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 for, come, I'm, 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 Army, I'm, 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 private sector, I'm, 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 I'm,
Come on, Senator, Kavua, I'm, 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 I'm,
Come on, Chair, um, I know, I'm, 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 you know, I'm, 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 Chairman, I'm, 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 employer, I'm, 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 in the event, I'm, 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 employment, I'm, 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 I, 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 I'm, 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 Kavua, I'm, 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 employer, I'm, 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 performance, I'm, 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 count towards the residency requirement, I'm, 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 Rainy, I'm, 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 your residency, your, your, I'm, 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 count towards your residency. I'm, 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 those are amendments, it was made to the existing law, you know, I'm, 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 count towards that. I'm, 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 you know, I'm, 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 I'm,
It is a long journey to go there. There is a lot of people, there is a lot of money. There is a lot of people who are going there. They are going to learn a lot of skills. They are going to drink water. They are going to go to the airport. They are going to go to the airport. They are going to go to the airport. They are going to learn a lot of skills. They are going to learn a lot of skills. They are going to learn a lot of skills. They are going to go to the airport. 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 But they are going to do it. Umol Chair.
Umol, Senator Noth, I'm concerned about that. I think it's a tough one. And I'm concerned about that. It's bad. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to learn a lot of skills. They are going to do it. They are going to learn a lot of skills. They are going to do it. Umol, please, Minister Paul.
Umol, Umol Chair. I want to talk to you locally. You are going to be calm and quiet. 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 You are going to make sure that you advertise locally. You are going to prove that you are advertising. You are going to qualify. I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. You are going to do it. You are going to do it. I want to talk to you locally. You are going to consult with me. They are going to learn a lot of skills. It's more costly than that. So, I want to talk to you locally. It boils down to cost. They rather learn a lot of skills. They are going to do it. 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 They are going to learn a lot of skills. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. But, for business, we want to learn a lot of skills. We want to learn a lot of skills. They are going to do it. I want to talk to you locally. I rather learn a lot of skills. They are going to do it. 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 But, I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it. 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 In the meantime, they are going to do it. They are going to do it. I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. But, I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. But at the moment, they are going to do it. They are going to do it. Let these folks go. They are going to do it. It really boils down to cost. They are going to do it. 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 But, I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it. It boils down to cost. For business, number one, incentive is profitability. They are going to do it. But, I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it. They are going to do it.
Umol, Minister Paul. I want to talk to you locally. 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 Senator, please.
Umol Chair. I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it locally. They are going to do it locally. They are going to do it locally. They are going to expire contracts. They are going to do it locally. 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 They are going to do it locally.
I want to talk to you locally. Labor. I want to talk to you locally.
Umol, I'm here. Umol, I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. I want to do a lot of skills. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. Minister, please. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to implement it locally. They are going to do 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 it. 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 They are going to do it.
Umol, Travis. I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it. 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 I want to talk to you locally. Umol.
Umol. I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it. 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 They are going to do it.
I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. Please, Minister Paul. I want to talk to you locally.
Umol Chair. This is Chief Travis. They are going to do it. 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 But, I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it. They are going to do it locally. With the same level of skill set. They are going to be competitive. They are going to do it locally. 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 But, they are going to do it locally. They are going to do it naturally. They are going to do it. Umol Chair.
I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to do it.
Umol, I'm here. I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. I'm here. I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it. 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 I'm here. I want to talk to you locally. But, I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it locally. They are going to do it locally. They are going to do it locally. I'm here. I'm here. They are going to do it locally. 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 They are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to do it locally. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. They are going to do it. 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 Resident visa. But, I want to talk to you locally. I'm here.
Umol, Senator Peter. I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. Senator Noth, I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally.
Umol, I want to talk to you locally. 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 Umol, I want to talk to you locally. 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 They are going to do it. They are going to do it. Including Immigration Act. They are going to do it. 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 Including Foreign Invasion. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. Immigration, they are going to do it. 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 They are going to do it.
I want to talk to you locally. Umol, I want to talk to you locally. Please, Senator. I'm here. I want to talk to you locally. I want to talk to you locally. So, they are going to do it. 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 Sorry, 2020. 2020, they are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to register. They are going to do it. 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 So, they are going to do it. But, they are going to do it. 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 Umol. They are going to do it. 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 So, they are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to do it temporarily. They are going to do it for six months. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. So, they are going to do it. They are going to do it. So, they are going to do it. I'm here. They are going to do it. 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 As much as we want. They are going to do it. 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 So, they are going to do it. 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 So, they are going to do it. 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 They are going to register. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. Business visa. Employment visa. They are going to do it. Revenue jar collector. They are going to do it. 2023, they are going to do it. They are going to do it. I'm here. I'm here. I want to talk to you locally. They are going to do it. 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 Proceeding. Umol, I'm here. I'm here. Performance. Umol. Umol, mercy. I want to talk to you. I want to talk to you. I want to talk to you. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. I want to talk to you. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. I want to talk to you. I want to talk to you. I'm here. HBMS, they are going to do it. They are going to do it. Umol, they are going to do it. Support and funding. They are going to upgrade the system. They are going to do it. 2020, 2022, they are going to do it. They are going to upgrade the system. They are going to do it. They are going to upgrade the system. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. Unfortunately, I'm here. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. Last FY, they are going to do it. 24. They are going to do it. 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 So, they are going to do it. 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 I want to talk to you. They are going to do it. Process outbound. As of last year. Late last year. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. But, they are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. Umol, I'm here. Umol, mercy. I want to talk to you. I want to talk to you. Labor amendment. I want to talk to you. 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 If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to register for work visa. I'm going to say something about the work visa.
I'm going to say something about the work visa. I have to say something about the work visa. Stay with the record. It's a lot of people who allow the army to march along. The army is going to march along. It's going to march along. It's clear. And if you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. And if you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, at the same time, if you have concerns about the work visa, if you have concerns about the work visa, you have to look for opportunities. And if you have concerns about the work visa, If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, if you have concerns about the work visa, if you have concerns about the bill, it's clear. Whether you're in the business sector or you're in the labor force. If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. And if you have concerns about the work visa, first and foremost, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. And if you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, if you have concerns about the work visa, if you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, if you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. And if you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. I'm going to say something about the work visa.
I'm going to say something about the work visa. What's best for our people? That's why we are elected. And if you have concerns about the work visa, more heads together, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to be careful. I'm going to say something about the work visa. And if you have concerns about the work visa, 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 I'm going to say something about the work visa. If you have concerns about the work visa, you have to register for F Y twenty four. And if you have concerns about the work visa, you have to register for work visa. If you have concerns about the work visa, 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 I'm going to say something about the work visa.
I'm going to say something about the work visa. If you have concerns about the work visa, Personal Data Protection Act 2025. If you have concerns about the work visa, if you have concerns about the work visa, if you have concerns about the work visa, if you have concerns about the ministry,
I'm going to say something about the work visa. If you have concerns about the work visa, 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 I'm going to say something about the work visa.
Yes. I'm going to say something about the work visa. I'm going to say something about the work visa. I have to say something about the work visa. I have to say something about the work visa. I'm going to say something about the work visa. I have to say something about the work visa. If you have concerns about the work visa, 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 if you have concerns about the sensitive, if you have concerns about the ministry, if you have concerns about the bill, if you have concerns about the legal framework, if you have concerns about the number one, limit the work visa. Number two, also define the work visa. Qualify the grievance. Government or agency will work on it. If you have concerns about the bill, you have to protect all the private data. And if you have concerns about digital security, you have to take advantage of it. So, if you have concerns about the bill, make sure the government can work on it. If you have concerns about the number two, if you have concerns about the number three, resolve the issue in the government. If you have concerns about international standards, if you have concerns about the government, if you have concerns about international government or agencies, if you have concerns about international agencies and government, Kajibaro ney bar teedagan er wey ta two way. Ene wey ta two way, two way street. Me garada mina kien seems like a common sense law eleng chidien kan gaitiperekagiin kien. Helab kijung take advantage. En wada parabak, kajinolak, mininaynigan kajibaro. Armir jinaar, motadajin ar magudangan i services im i governance. Tamak, that's all for now, ngewor katiduk.
Kum mol. Amata kabiwarro gan leleleko. Im komol wey jala ijrim gijan wut. Ingakpilan kuarjapalu email am, ketchalayagan public hearingar. Im wang bakola chidugun tumi email am. Ketchalaygu ketchit public hearingan, peelin kuik concern ngake. Kum mol. Ney bar, degan to katiduk gijan memberin kamidiye. Ak komol luturin ebalo chirigar melalegan peelin. Ilo turin giyo, ilo kau dijeneylel ngan. Eji aden wun, poyin chujim wang maalot agen lalé. Ilo orgi iraba toku, ilo an peelin. Ibe chen chemeneyo arin, ney ubi tada. Kau dijuk.
Kum mol. Chair, ilo agar etali. Biil nampay iyong olemel, yaarapal lalé tadantchemeneyanam tadakkagienegay. Yo mun revised code nan model. Ijelogun administrative issuego, me nganit jara polipin TLC anam kulaken ngake. Ngai vaykanan, but chon i issue edigen section 110. Lo biilne lapta tangan subsection rule. Ngon ilalé section ne. Jawa bar chair. So section 110 agay et pampa ewaran olibar armit marong. Ngiam jan subridion ewaran complaint poyin talangan court. Ime man. E inconsistent ipin chemeneyan arim an marong. Marong anan chon armi poyin talangan court ngewor jabarot kain. Aga kyong okon ilalé section 111. Kyok tongan subsection 2 gay, im jan dogun nam kamuygian chon court. Impose compensatory relief ngan damages go. So et jaren inconsistent ipin section 110 subsection 2. Ijelogun mina kien chair, par tio naalen edigen ni cosmetic talent changes gay. Nganit jara polipin TLC as well as the clerk. Nang komol tada.
Kum mol. Eji aden wun gan leleko. Nang komol ampa okonit jara polipin TLC yo. Ngan kau wang maalok. Section gain kujilulu an peelin me, kayu gijan am maalot agen chongani. Kyong ay ney leto ngan memberin kamidiye bojen. Chujim wang maalot, ngalem katidukku. Ak caparewot kal maalok janke. Chon ngay, chon ngayon. Joke, inejpar chino tokojan tuyang. Im leto ngan. Senator Kabuwag poyin chujim wang maalot. Caparewot kal maalok janak katidukku wang ilohan peelin. Kau dijuk. Senator Kabuwag.
Kum mol chair, komol genam par lero winchino. Kamoni katidukin. Motaya, inan workalak ilim kau dijolep ministerin. Im tada ido aero berman kamidiin. Eji nyareng im awalip riarbarin an ni dijala. Juga ora re durjaga androjolop iringkengan an armi romjake. Dewijawakumujalep. Kau dijalep. Web chonin biil may loke, karangan nan wo charong. Etun kabiwey ketch. Ngan madan ai si wawin iljum chagelak. En watake. Jara balgaiin giyo, rachino wang maalongan, kajibaro digital work. Im. Ilogun auruk chijalale. Peelin chon peeloy auruk ngan kajibaro armit, armit jinaar. Kijuy churumajel. Chen eleng kaintor en waran marong walongan kijingi. Renai koti olipin information agay chon armit. Im mininaym jan walo kibela gan laline er court information chen armit. E dalim koti chen ganayam. Koya jige rekodiagam jair koti, iliwak kau nganay. Chen motaya er. Chalak kilen ayagi olip menanewech. Ime auruk wey en worchet kain na. Men wo metich kabiwey jikajikagi. Ime lukun chimwe, im chetchet. Men ohi tanlalain gay, wawanan. Ewana er kolege correct information an chon armit. Wey lukun chetchet im chimwe. Im ellok waloke berjenem, ilaw ause visit ilo air kajibarwe. Chenan romerit tenek kaman chorren. Neja court informationinim kaman riabak agayokum. Taganewech marong walok iljum chagelak, ngay or chorren. Angan jota wey chonin peelay auruk ngan kajibarwe. Kijwey marong chorren, marong luji wealth ngayam. Ngarunay kaman chorren, rinay, oru ibor rinanay chalay. Im chidukin, men atchonin peelay ilugun auruk nganan. Kajibaro ketch, kijibaut. Ije worut kupanak kau nenama koya jige im jair. Wey, im jair mangaydelen wang. Ren marong kijarbal yatom ngan worchet kain menak koya kuarjap kaman i ak rubulim yu kagi. Ewey. Chetablikunchele, eji boyu maalobawana. Government collect information, correct information. Ngan poyin lukun chetchet teedagan individual citizens. Eji boyon maalot nganan dukuna talikupan peelin agi derajake chonin peelay auruk. Im chenai chuta giliken. Kamolol, lolawujenin an ministerin or sponsor, im rinarjain ipin. Anan wun mantak. Kum mol at chair.
Kum mol. Senator, im former president Kabuwag gan leleleko hinam. Chalok katiduk, ilar yelonge tijetok. Ene et jayuji peerutin gan chibanket. Joke, kyong ay ney leto ngan, former president im senator Nut. Poyin wang maalot agen pat budokatidukku wang.
Kum mol, chair. Tio naalen kau di. Ministerin, wey dit ney jiajareto edigen peelin. Chon biil may loke. Turian wey pukchigun giyo. Anu utalok. Mebur teknologi im awalipen wawin kien. Ngani peeruru an. Ilo dag melaleko, chemenotak melalega. Renile nur kien aruit katchiyo, wawin wotjetna. Ne, pene chon utal katiduk. Kalwa et chapodep peelin ag. Katiduk gay, enwatan gar etan ichar par kama lelegi. Yonan wey nwar nalam im marong war tipitukilom, chirik melaleko ang. Edigiten. Edigiten remedy. Ilo gay eleng, eleng procedure gan file complaintin. Plen lawsuit um kain kien. Ilo. Ilo section chugijongchun. Subsection rule. Ilo an. Kaloka kodon agay panimpois napan kaman. Danay pa mir pakigun. Penalty wawin wotjet. Edigiten. Katiduk. Provision kien, patjigapavray. Ewey or defamation kain kien. Patjigapavrayan war maal, dangay loke war. Or provision gan injection um writ of mandamus. Angan an chon aris file chon defamation kain kien. Peelin kabiarakayan kuoton wang maalot agen kaman chamro edigiten. Pakigun kain kien. Kum mol.
Kum mol. Senator Nut, kien ney lewajangan. Poyin wak mota, joke, choloper. Ile ikerolongan ipin atan eji. Aden wun poyin chujim wang maalam waga katiduk. Senator Nut, kau dijuk.
Kum mol, madam chair. Iman gar katidukayo, minyo karkaminau edigen section 110 subsection 2. Im section chugijongchun subsection 2 gay, red contradict teedon. But section 110 2 gay, pampa court marong impose. Chaparewot, chaparewot other, including bird compensation. Mine edigen section 111 subsection 2, et ba etam marong. So tada mina onle. Me gartha air contract itigiron agay, biil gay edigitjen injury go im chon armit. Enit. Enit pake edigen peelewot. Et chab edigen tadant defamation. So ngay kien enit pake chon personal information ngan chon armit. Chup protecte, for example, ilugun nam dan karwaji. So armit yo, armit yo me personal information yo, im marong nip provide. Im marong nip pake lenganak chon lawsuit edigiten menakay. Et chablikunchelade defamation. Wey tadankagieni ekana laganan core government ministry. Merit jara baligan personal teedagay, red tokuninam store protecte im pal menak wotjet. So tadant defamation ne, ngelijwalok. So im marong war scenario ime kiet government, core government ministry gal. Red pake personal teedagagan chon armit nam dogun nam ayerinam tadant tefemi. So ingay. Enit giyo itok manle defamation lawsuit ne under the Civil Procedure Act or common law. Whether many. Whether contradicting subsection gay, renit per or jab gay. Ewanit kapajaragan chon armit provide chon defamation lawsuit. Whether it's through the Civil Procedures Act or through common law. Chaloborong et chablikuniam manau. Waga. Okay. Kum mol chair.
Kum mol, eji aden wun gan leleko. Tamak, im lele. Senator Nut, ilan gar kaman akatidukku, kyong ney lewajangan ipin. Senator Peter, poyin chujim wang maalok, kan kal maalok janwa.
Kum ol tada madam chair, wey kubar marong kile gijarolo. Iini nalu tada edigen biil aurukin. Me beriman midan kamidiin. Igunan kile riarbarin. Ilo raliban rainin, nalu tada ministerin, ministerin or sponsor beelin. Tada, ranot kile eji nar jara barin an ni dijala. Madam chair, ewey purumaywey. Ministry emergency waran kien imi rajayu itperigi. Eber personal teedaguan armit peiluturin. Raner war kwalak. Patchirigum kaini jamarong gar katidugunir. Personal teedan, madam chair, laline laban kaurge. Imelwak kamolol melanogent nolke. Chonin biil epoyen pukchigun, ime atarhan. Ak ranotken melalewaan eji edigen. Chexan leme arvidi. Helab tada ilan ministerin isin kien an kien leto leda. Melale kien edigen teedagin an katiju armit. Rainin iorijon chambol im jau chilayga. Loemronga. Ime chonin an teedaguan merugun auruk, meru kwalak, karagarin chon armit. Engane edigen police certificate doneralak katiduk. Ego ministerin isin choyiluruzage, et jubeydogan faxelangan. Armit yaagisin choyo red katiduk. Kage jan tuligun majelin. Im kamolol wey peelin giyanejutum kunseyukaada olipin. Information aurukin an katiju jurumayor. Aga. Ilo peelin et chablo. Ministerita, imi chinchita, imi. Kagieni nenijutukum. Beri wun, ime chon. Ministerim eniluruzage, jelagunawlo, naninkapitan ehtawardigin me. Ulinenic chuta gajan. Ab peelin gunanu. Madam chair, gurugune mol, imelwak errem nawar peelin lema ndakalu kien. Kum mol.
Kum mol. Senator Peter, kan kal maalok janwa. Nejbar kero longan ipin, minister Paulan. Amata kabiwarro, ewarero kakubaba. Apilin motadajana par kerolek, igunan patchirik. Im ngay et. Egripen, olevin memberin kamidiin. Keilar giyo, wawarayadukum majar taber tijetok. E, turin. Chilugun ay wudip peelin poyin chibanket. Enwot chon iboyagan net sapodep peelin. Im. Chichen lelele dagay. Enturudujor rojchata rajaku ilu peelinak. Rajanang, rajata gay peelin im ney poyagan sapoday. Uwato gipin memberin kamidi kain, kamidi ye. Ngay jalan. Im ney korolongan kumro, ministeran. Amata kabiwarro, ngabarwarta kumro marong. Kumro kanan paye chalek, chalahan kamidiye ngurbota gilpeelay amiro. Kau di kumro.
Chair komolam, kamolol yogo mkap rinuan kamidi ney arro. Im parano, kamolol amta kaboto saken. Ken an marong gar kama lelik kajiang ken. Chibaram katabarin an Piliinim, enwaran lo ilo an digyo iman legend kamidin, Chair. E Jon, enwatan garkamileke Jon chibaram katabaroy auruk luturin. Laturigin ime jijaro baligan, cyber kap digital security, digital data, emolim minigin utamjit. Ime auruk wey jen kabiweyjiget, enwet Jon lal. Wey ilo ar manmalo kilo jaro bal gey, ene lalakot ar aywiji minigin ngan air kijaro, helap tada personal informationgo an aremit ilo digital space ngay. Im, ema tjeni Chair kamolol yogum ngay warwor jenipen, amdakabwata saken nganan parleto, melalekoanilikata, ilo anem kujyo Chair nganejilangane, Kumol.
Kumol, Minister Paul, kaudi melalewojankwey, chuyu manmalo ot. Amata Kabiwaro.
Kumol, Madam Chair. Chirgot kakubaba, enwada garbat, kageenenej lore international standardum, et jalore var kansidukjena areng. Kar Joni kachidugarwan mantakijen kamidin emi jepayendata, arwiji marong legi ar kijaro bal teda gey. Im the first ed janganar bede Pilirodugin. Wey kwalak weyijalamanak weyir mogodajenar. Lealak, sirabidukin, aketchalak. Eneri pecalaka kageen jikjer. Aga Kumol, Kumol alipen ami support. Rumjodaan le, mini jenijigiya kamonijaro bal gey make sure gey ceboyjak ngan tajjalay aremit. Peojen. Berudion. Kumol.
Kumol, ewangayelangay chaloperjen kamidin. Alikarkejemelok public hearing ngareng, keni nijalap Piliyo engolemen. Ey, motajenar kiligana wot potokchet kachalaywogan aj, public hearing ngareng iliju. Kijanganej public hearing ilijugen. Kijanganej chen marong manmalo ngan nijalap Piliyo chidugunwulchidu wey daku, roararinturudu jiparontan duidunet. Ach, chen ekemoni iliju. Im iliju, kijanganej chino ilo radumjoneawa, et chap chungulawa. Im, kijanganej kononogan nijalap Piliyo nguradumjon. E Jon Pili ngan, Jon ken ngan kemon ugodakaloecha kageinin wot. Ime areyagalu 2017 no, ngan kemoni Jon fundeyo nayanan anti-human trafficking fund. Nijalap Piliyo nguradumjon. Im, nem kijanganej manmalo otam par kemoni nijalap Piliyo nimwulchidu. Nijalap Piliyo nimwulchidu wey jepa Jon Pili ngan Jon ken, ngan ugod criminal kageinio yareyakilu rotowijen emeneo. Ngan kaitokolok, im yen kalbu, an Jon o imet jube, im karelo ngelo chigun kalbu. Chen chidugunwulchiduno awa, nganchibionguro awa. Ilo ane chalok chaaj, im nganugunwachet eyarlakot. Nijalap Piliyo nimwulchidu. Ime jutak kijanganej par, public hearingi, nijalap Piliyo nimwolemen. Nimwolemen et Jon Pili, ngan Jon ken ngan kaitokolok kudienan statue lemteijenio. Chen chiduno iyo ngan chunguliyo, ngan lealak ela bijen, ngan ekajadekkejigo ela pkaje wuye. Chen chiduno iyo ngan chunguliyo, ngan amrijarvaro atali. Imenejelgata da ene nijalap Piliyo nimwulchidu nimjon. Nijalap Piliyo nimwulchidu nimjon. Jon Pili ngan Jon ken ngan ugodolok section radumjon ukpuguyro, Subsection Jon and Prohibition Truck Act, 1987 ngan karelang marwana, human kamelelewaan prohibition truck akagein go. Imo kijaro balin. Noganej Piliyo warjangkane. Im renuan kamidin, kamolol Reynar berijen keichupungan kiyo. Reynuwan kamidin, reyn Minister Wisely Segreyaj, Minister David Paul, Minister Kalani Kanewo, Ezo Valen ar kachalaydok. Senator former President KJH Noot, Senator former President David Kabiwah, Senator Prue Piliman ar var kachalaygey udamaya enet kuwaduguyilu. Senator Girojipiyamamura ar doki chupunga arpaga yudamuy kyerel. Senator Wallace Peter, em kijanganej chuyu magatok ngan yen weyin tabaroliven Pili gey. Lidukjon ngan kijang. Par Jonalen kamolol Reynar berijen chupungan kiyo. President, Senator David Kabiwah, President and Senator Noot, em gap Senator Peter. Kamolol olive Eji, kamolol olip, em gap Senator Minister David Paul. Memberin kamidie em par intrudujar, chen chupungan kiyo. Kamolol kumaens everan am nijalay. Im gap medya, kuma yanganmola olip, anamikijenamik. Anijen kijara aman kijareven, lo kuyiliju.